Seven o'clock, I got seven oh one on my computer, like to call it zoning board to order. We have a public hearing and it looks like if we take care of the public hearing, we can do other stuff after that. So I'd like to read the public hearing notice. Eighty-six Powder Mill Road pursuant to Mass General laws. Forty-eight S nine S fifteen. Mayor zoning board of appeals will hold a remote, remote public hearing on Monday twenty-four January seven P M via Zoom. To hear all persons interested in the application filed by Blatt, Babrowski and Harvati LLC nine Damon Mill Square Suite four A four Concord Mass. On behalf of the owner applicant CNS Maynard LLC CEO Kaufman Realty Inc. Six thirty-two Washington Street Southeastern Mass. Consistent with sections five, one, three, and ten two of the zoning bylaws, the applicant is requesting a special permit. For Tree Plaza eighty-six Powder Mill Road Maynard. The application requests authorization to extend a pre-existing non-conformity parentheses encroachment into side setback and parentheses. The special permit also requests the change of use. Parentheses to a grocery store A K K supermarket and parentheses and will require a finding by the board that the change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So we will run this as we will ask for the applicant. I'm not sure it is, but the applicant to explain what it is they want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Mark Babrowski. I'm counsel for the applicant. Good evening to all of you. I think that tonight we have a relatively straightforward application for two special permits. The first is under section five point one point three point one, and it's simply to extend an existing non-conforming structure. The structure at the locus today is eighty-six Powder Mill Road is non-conforming because it's too close to the side yard. The district requires twenty feet, I believe, or fifteen feet, and that's a pre-existing lawful condition. The second special permit is under the next section of non-conformities, and that's five point one point three point two. And it simply requires a special permit to change the use within a non-conforming structure right now that 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 the space in the structure houses storage. And we propose to put in the asset co-op market. I think before we go much further, I'm going to turn it with your permission this over to Sam to give you a sort of high level community involved interview or not interview, but overview. So that you got a feel for what this is all about. I'm sure many of you know already.
Do I have permission to do a short presentation and share my screen?
Yes, are you going to be addressing either of these or just general overview?
This is a brief overview of the co-op's intent in coming into the space and working with the Kaufman Development Group to come into eighty-six Powder Mill Road.
Okay.
So it addresses the use specifically. All right, and I promise to keep it brief, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, is everyone able to see that? Yep. All right, so I promised to keep it brief, just want to give a few folks who may not have context for the history of the co-op, just a little bit of history of what gets us here today. So the co-op has been in organization and startup mode for ten years now. And in bringing this up, it's just to really highlight the individuals and groups that have been a part of the co-op's development over the past years. And just the real passion and intention that comes to the decision to sign a lease and and have the intent to be present at eighty-six Powder Mill Road. So looking forward, so the board that you see here is the current iteration of the board, just to give them a brief shout out. They are representing a ton of folks who've served on the boards of the co-op over the years, and there are a number of owners who I know are present here today. And it's just many thanks to the folks that have brought us to today and and highlighting the joy of the moment of signing a lease after ten years of startup work. We then, you know, just have this fun little drawing of where we are, where we hope to be. This is just an interpretation of us here at eighty-six Powder Mill Road. And we we found this location to be really ideal, and we hope it's ideal, not just for the co-op, but also for the town of Maynard. And really thinking about the economic impact that this can have. It's placed so well in the corridor for access from surrounding towns, and we're hopeful that we could have a real economic pull to the area. And in line with that, we want to look at briefly our impacts and values. And just emphasizing the fact that this is a real grassroots movement that's happened. So now we have over eighteen hundred owners as of today. I think we hit eighteen fifty-four. These owners have done grassroots investment, and we have over two million raised for the building of this project. Approximately thirty-nine percent of our owners live in Maynard, and that was the real root desire to have a space in Maynard. But at this point, in the past couple of years, we've seen this shift, and it used to be that over fifty percent of our owners lived in Maynard. Now, over sixty percent of our owners are coming from surrounding towns, around forty-three surrounding towns. And again, it's just bringing the the thought and the concept that these folks are coming in, and and we don't want them just to come to the co-op. We want them to go downtown. We want them to enjoy all aspects of what Maynard has to offer. So just to visualize this impact, here's the potential location for the future co-op. Here are the Maynard owners ordering all of all of Maynard's boundaries. And then we look at the impact of the regional owners, so folks who who are dedicated to drive in and come and shop. And and that, you know, the impact that that can have for the local economy. And thinking of local economy, this is just a picture of some of the folks that we've talked with, over three hundred local vendors and farmers and producers that we would like to lift up and show on our shelves and local has has shown to be the most important thing to our owners. And we see the benefits both to the town of Maynard and and just to the regional producers that we could bring to light. And could not be here if we didn't look back and just looking back at where we came from and knowing there's a rich history of co-ops here in Maynard. So not only with this location, we have the opportunity to bring grocery back to the Victory Plaza. But in a serendipitous way, Victory Plaza closed out the old co-op. So we're also bringing a co-op back to the place that shut the other one down. So there's some serendipity in that moment, and we really look forward to the opportunity to bring the cooperative spirit back here to Maynard. I'm not going to read all of this, I promise. This is, we did send a copy to Bill. It is in the packet available to the board. And just sharing some of the things, some of the intent that we have around how we plan to support and nurture our environment and the impacts that we had specifically talking with Conservation Commission. And about this deck that we'd like to put in and how we see it as being a benefit to the region. And then we also have been looking at how we align with Powder Mill Quarter Improvement Goals. You know, our trade map for our market studies for the co-op align really well and with the trade area overlapped with the Powdermore Quarter Impact Study that was done, and we really look and think about these things a lot with the development of the co-op and how we can benefit the region. And then we also looked at the Maynard Master Plan Goals, and again, we see a lot of alignment. You don't have to work to find alignment. The core values of the co-op and the goals that we have are in full alignment with the Maynard Master Plan Goals. And we look to further fulfill those in partnership with the town and and other businesses here. And lastly, this is just our end statement again for you all to read at your leisure. But we really want to embody these ends through our staff treatment, our customer service, our community giving and engagement, our product selection, and our support of the larger cooperative economy and community. And and we see this as being all in partnership with the town of Maynard. So that is what I have for today, and I'll stop sharing. So thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to introduce Michelle Driscoll, who is our architect, and she'll give you up to the minute review of the proposed decking that we intend to incorporate into the new structure. This is the substantial change that required a special permit under section five point one point three point one.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, thank you. So we would like to open up some views and enjoy the Asavet River. The co-op is asked to create some seating out the back. Keeping in mind that we don't want to infringe too much on the the flood plain. We are looking to keep the deck long and narrow against the building. The footings will stay above the high water mark and will can a lever and make use of I enough space to create a small seating area and sort of engage the outdoors at the back.
Would it be possible for us to share screen to show this? I'm looking to see whether Phil Henry or Chris Elf and my associate has something appropriate here.
Yes, I can I can share the screen.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay, I'll zoom into this area here. Just to orientate, whoops, I was too close. Just to orientate everyone, this is Powder Mill Road along the lower half of the screen here. The existing structure, the existing shopping center is is located here where my mouse is circulating. And then back here is the is the deck that Michelle was talking about.
And you can see there was a an ash tree that was identified as something that we would want to keep. And so we're we're proposing building the deck around the trunk of that, and it shouldn't have any any substantial harm to the tree as we as we build around that.
So the deck is twelve feet by sixty-five feet. It largely sits on top of the existing structure. There's very little overhang, but there are some slight overhangs. And the purpose of the deck is to allow the shoppers at the new grocery facility to take a cup of coffee or a sandwich or whatever else up onto the beautiful overview of the Asavet River that flows behind the store. So before we go on to the second special permit, it's our contention to the board that the test is easily met. This is not substantially more detrimental than the existing situation out there. Those are the words of section five point one point three, the extension alteration or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure. We think that this is actually a vast improvement over the existing structure. It brings amenities to bear that don't exist today. It will provide a community meeting place for people to enjoy refreshments after they're done with shopping in the facility. All good.
So let me just ask a question on this diagram that you're showing. And that is, where is the need for the setback? All I see is the deck. I don't see the encroachment.
It's the building itself that is the encroachment, and it's pre-existing today. So where it says proposed three quarters crushed stone and shade tolerant seed mix, that side of the building is too close to the property line.
And so it's within that dotted line at your hand that your mouse is waving on?
Yes, there's a.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Yeah. And so that makes the whole operation for us, one that is governed by your section in the book. And anytime that's the case, and you propose the words of your bylaw, reconstruction, extension, or structural change, which we do, and this was vetted with building commissioner. Then we require a special permit to show that the change will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing conditions. And in fact, we think it's a vast improvement. As I said, the deck literally will sit on top of the existing roof with very little in the change of overhang.
All right. Do any of the board members have any questions here?
Um. Is the deck going to be, what is it, ADA compliant and how so?
I'm I'll leave that for Michelle to address.
So it it will be accessible from the supermarket. There is a an existing egress out the back, which is not currently ADA compliant. We will reuse that existing egress, and while we cannot make it accessible, we will have area of refuge on the deck, which would make it acceptable by code. So they can access it and and there will be area of refuge should there come to be an emergency. But ideally, access would be in and out the front of the store.
Will there also be a way for abled people to just go up and down without having to go through the store? Like, if you're done with your coffee, can you just walk down some stairs and go to your car?
No, there's no access out the back of the building. It would be emergency egress only, so you would have to go back out through the grocery store.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, Paul, I've got one. So following up on 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 Lussi's issue of ADA compliance. Are we allowed to do that? I mean, can you have that type of a deck? And it's basically telling people who come to the co-op that everybody is invited unless you have a disability, you're not allowed to go on to the we don't have access to the wealth here. Would that be correct? I'm not trying to portray it as a negative, but it's that's the honest answer, I guess.
No, no, that's it is accessible, so it it is wheelchair handicap compliant. You will be able to go out on the deck. The grocery store is required to have two means of egress, and they must be divided by more than a third of the diagonal of the overall length of the store. And so we have an egress out the front, and we have a second one, which is pre-existing out the rear. And so that is code compliant. The deck will be accessible. What we're saying is that you will not be able to take a wheelchair exactly out that back egress. But we will have an area of refuge, which is basically space where somebody can be set outside of the building until they can, it's it's an area of rescue assist until somebody can come and help them get out safely, and that is also code compliant.
Okay, so the egress that you mentioned off of the deck, without going back to the co-op, the egress is only emergency egress, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I misunderstood that. Okay. All right, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Questions?
Chair, I have a question. I think it was mentioned that the footings of the deck are in the flood plain, but that will be above the flood elevation. Just wondering, does was, has there any been any consideration for climate change or increased precipitation, or is this area of the river flooded all currently?
I think I can respond. This was brought up during the Conservation Commission hearing. So we did review this with them, and we did have a wetlands engineer come out and do flagging. And the the Conservation Commission found that sufficient for where we were placing the footings. It's before the major fall off, and the bank is a fairly steep fall off there. And maybe, Phil, you have something more technical you could say, but my understanding is the commission found it sufficient that we originally were going to have the deck further out about twenty feet. But that did put the footings in an area, like you said, that could be, we could find to have a flood issue. So on the recommendation of the wetland specialist, we brought it back closer to the building, and so now it's at a twelve foot distance. Yeah.
Yeah, I can I can add a little bit to that. The the footings are not in the flood plain. The the flood plain elevation is elevation one forty-three, which is this contour elevation out here. So this is downstream. This is the river. This is upstream. So these little circles here are the sonotubes or the footings that will be placed in the ground. So so they so they are both horizontally and vertically above the flood plain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I I have a question about your footings. You you said that you're using sonotubes, so am I assuming you're putting cement footings in? Is that correct?
That that was that was my term. I guess I'll defer to Michelle if I'm incorrect.
Okay. Because I'm, go ahead.
The deck has not been fully engineered yet, but we will have a structural engineer design what is appropriate for the soils and for the elevation.
Okay, so um, so you might consider using helical piers instead of cement because it's a common thing to use in wetlands and in environmentally sensitive areas.
And
The answer to my question, because you haven't, you haven't passed the engineering.
Exactly, and and so for that, I would have to defer to a structural engineer, and and we do not have it as yet designed.
Okay.
But something we could consider, yes.
Any other questions from the board, please?
I assume that this has already gone by the the police, the fire department, all of that, and they've signed off.
Yes, the that that's been through, rounded out through my office to all the reviewing entities, police, fire, obviously conservation, building. Who am I forgetting? I'm forgetting somebody. Public Works.
So are we are we done with questions from the zoning board? Because I have one. I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, I I would like the opportunity to come back for the special second special permit, depending on how you want to handle this.
Yeah, well, let me finish on this first one.
Thank you.
And we can discuss from there. My interpretation of your request for the special permit is for that additional, whatever it is, ten feet? I can't see the tiny numbers there, but that ten feet extension?
I think I would frame it a different way. The the building as it appears today is non-conforming. It has, as you can see, some encroachment in the side yard.
Well, well, let let me finish asking my question then.
Go ahead.
Because if you only had the deck to the right of that D B L twelve inch tree that's marked there, you would not be in front of the board.
It would depend on whether where it says the where your where your cursor is there.
If if that if that square is not part of your deck design, you would be in front of the board.
It would not, we would not be in front of the board if that square was not a part of the existing building. Regardless of whether the deck is over it or not, we would need to come in for a special permit if that square exists today. I hope I'm, this is confusing.
If you want the deck to go all the way to where your three quarter inch crust stone dot is, you're in front of the board. If you stop over where it says D B L twelve inch tree, you're not. Is that right?
No, because the structure is non-conforming today, where it says proposed three quarter crushed stone. That building requires a special permit if we do anything to it to change it, not just depending on whether we're changing it in the encroachment area, but anywhere.
You're asking for the, you're asking for the deck as part of this as a special permit.
Yes.
That does not extend into the setback. You don't need a special permit, right?
Well.
Can I add a clarifying note here, Mark?
Go right ahead.
Just in, just to try to answer the question. So just for context, where it has the door swing within the encroachment area right now. That is the current egress, and that is the current structural framing for the egress. And so the intention was that we would use what is the current egress door framing. And that currently has a deck out front of it that we would be replacing and building off of. So I don't know if that gives more clarity, but that is the current egress that exists, and we plan to reuse that.
And so how big is that current deck? Does that current deck would extend into the non-conformity, right?
Yes. It is the current egress point. Michelle, do you have the measurements on that? Oh, I think you just muted yourself.
Um, it it's fairly small. I I think maybe it's four by four.
There you go.
Five by four. It's it's fairly.
This new deck, what, twelve feet, you said?
Was it? Yes.
Yes.
So you want to take four feet to twelve feet? That that is not not going to the right, but going towards the river. You want to go from four feet out to twelve feet?
Correct.
So that's that's what your special permit request is, is to put that four feet to twelve feet within the setback zone. What happens to the right of that doesn't concern us because it's within within the setbacks. Does that, does that simplify what the request is?
Well, for the purposes of the board's discussion, yes.
Thank you. And so if you went from the D B L twelve inch tree line to the right, you don't have to be in front of this board.
For the purposes of this discussion, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify what we're looking at. It's only that little piece to the left that extends beyond the pre-existing four foot deck. Okay. Any other questions from the board members?
I don't suppose Rick is here.
No, Rick is not here, but I have gone over this with him. I do have a little, well, I think the board understands that the 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 graphics, you don't need any additional graphics there. It's a question of what you're trying to define as the what's triggering the special permit request.
So as we go through this, the next question I have, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this from the general public that's on the call? Hearing none? Is there anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this request? I don't hear any there either. Very quiet.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one second, because we have to have a two pages of of.
Yeah, if you would like to speak, just say your name and speak out loud, because we can't see if if anyone is putting their hand up or anything.
I'd like to speak. My name is Ellen Anthony. I live in Stowe. I am a member-owner of the Asavet Co-op. And I think that having a deck off the back encroaching on existing, non-existing, previous, future, whatever, as shown in the drawing, I think that will be a great asset to the the co-op, to the members and other non-member shoppers. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So board members, how would you like to do this? You want to hear his other case and then go into debate by ourselves on both issues, or do you want to do it one at a time?
I'm okay with doing it one at a time.
Same, I think that's a good idea, while it's fresh in our mind.
I am.
Yeah, I agree.
So for that, we we're going to make this as two public hearings. This being the first one, the second will be the change of use discussion. And so I would like a motion, a board member, to close the public hearing so we can have our discussion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing so that the board can discuss the matter.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Brad, Peter.
Yep, yes.
Yep.
All right. So.
Mr. Chair, it's just.
Mr. Chair, uh, it's just, it's Bill, uh, just for, uh, point of clarification, we do have our full board. Uh, as well as all our alternates, so when, uh, the board does ultimately decide to vote, we want to make sure. Um, we do it by name, please.
Okay, boss. So was there anybody that said no? Are we all in the favor on this? I think we're all in favor.
Okay.
All right. So. Comments, thoughts? Leslie, John, any thoughts?
Um, I'm in favor. I don't, I don't see any issues.
All in private now?
John, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for getting that clarification. I was trying to figure out if there was a deck there or not, so. Looks like they're just adding an additional eight feet, but I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. So my, my thought is that the new deck cannot extend beyond the, the sightline of the existing building. Now, there's no more encroachment than is, is there now?
That's pretty much what it is, what they're doing now, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what you're proposing, but I want to get that into the motion if indeed we are agreed to make this into a motion.
Okay.
That there's no further encroachment by the structure, the new structure.
Yeah. And the rear setback against the river. Uh, they're not doing anything there, right? They're still within the, the, the end of the property line.
That's correct.
I don't, I don't recall what the setback is in the rear when you have a water body as your, your property line. Maybe Bill knows that answer.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I lost you on that.
What's the rear set when your setback is, is a river?
Oh, on the, the setback of, for that, for our rear is, uh, actually Julia, did, was there a different setback for, um. In this particular instance, or was it just the standard rear setback?
Um, from a, I, I don't, I don't think so from a, a planning and zoning side.
So then we just have the, we have the, um, the, what is it? The yard setback on that is, uh, 15 feet. Required for the rear. And there's also, uh, yeah, uh, the, the. The property line, there's kind of little.
The, the property line is a little confusing in this project because it does, um, you know, it, it, it's in, in area that is. Right at the land-water line, uh, so I think that's kind of the, the difficult part about figuring out that setback. But we had no problem in conservation.
But in figuring it out, I just want to know that it is well within, uh. Back requirement.
Yeah, that, that setback, this is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group, that, uh, deck setback does not encroach into the rear 15 yard setback requirement.
15 foot, right.
The 15 foot, sorry.
Yeah.
This is why we try to deliberate on our own, just so we don't get confused with too many comments, but thank you.
It's already past muster with the cones come.
Yep. So, any, any other comments, discussion, do we think we're okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good idea. I think it, I think it's, uh, gonna add to the area and, and not detract from it at all.
Yeah, the thing that I worry about though is litter. But that's beyond our scope. That would be more conservation. You have a bunch of people out there throwing their sandwich wrappers and drinking cups over the edge because they missed the barrel. That's not going to be very good, but.
Yeah.
Ruled on that already, right?
Yep, and we didn't have a problem also, you know, the, the demographic using, um, a Co-op market and, uh, is more, you know. Environmentally conscious, um, and Sam and the rest of the team has assured us that those things are being taken into consideration.
And as well as you, uh, the, um. Refuge containers in the back are going to be, uh, can you explain the screening real quick for the chair, Julia?
Yes, so we were in conservation, we were concerned about screening those, um, dumpsters, making sure that they were corralled. And that was something that I think came up also in one of the comments from, um, building and, uh. Uh, the town engineer, so they added, this is one of the newer designs that you've seen right in front of you, and they added the, um, dumpster enclosure. And then we also added a concrete pad underneath that for, um, maintenance use, so it will last longer too.
All right. So, what, what's the, the sense of the board? Are we gonna, uh, approve this special permit?
I think we should approve that.
Then, Peter, why, why don't you, uh, put together a motion?
Well, I worked it out.
Oh, that's probably better.
Oh, well, I, I can take a stab at it if you want.
Yeah, sure.
I have a crib sheet, remember, on the, um, staff board.
Well. All right.
We don't need that.
We'll see. I make a motion to approve the petition by, um, Blatman, Bobrowski and Haverity. Um. For, uh, special permit for Victory Plaza 86 Powder Mill Road, Maynard, requesting authorization to extend a pre-existing. Non-conforming encroachment to the side setback, finding that it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And that it causes no further encroachment than the existing non-conforming structure. Does that fly?
Yep. That's pretty good.
I'd like to see some, some numbers in that.
Well, there's the four to 12 feet.
Four, towards the rear setback, correct.
Yeah.
And the side setback, uh, no more than what is existing now.
Right.
Yeah, good. So I need a second.
I second that motion.
All right. Now Bill wants a roll call, so Bill, make the roll call.
Okay, Paul, all right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll go with you last in this case. So we have, uh, and this one Brad and Paige are not voting, so, uh, Jerry?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay, five zero. Okay, very good, thank you.
So now I want a motion to reopen the meeting to discuss their second special permit. Who can make that motion for us?
I can make that motion. I'd like to propose a motion to reopen the meeting to discuss the second special permit request.
Second.
Second. Eric seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, so. Petitioner, if you're still there.
Yes.
Could you discuss your use change special permit request for us?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you members for that affirmative vote on the first special permit. Um, the second special permit is under 5.1.3.2. Altered to provide for a substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner. Or to a substantially greater extent. So the first clause there altered to provide for a substantially different purpose is the one that applies. These are very obscure words. They are words taken directly from chapter 48, section six, dealing with non-conforming uses and structures. I don't know of more than two cases in history that turn on this. Most of the time, this is a surprise to an applicant that they also need a special permit to change the use within a non-conforming structure. Here, we're clearly changing the use. The existing use of that portion of the building is storage. And we're going from a passive category of use to an active category with retail. So we're covering our bases and we're asking for the second special permit. Again, the question is whether or not. The change will be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Uh, for all of the reasons that were largely covered with discussion of the first special permit. We think that we passed the test with flying colors. I'll also alert the board that tomorrow. We have another public hearing at the planning board for a special permit on a very minor parking reduction and a site plan review. To go over some other aspects of the site with the planning board and their, uh, consulting engineer, uh, and other staff members. So if you have questions about specific aspects of how the change of use will have impact. In terms of traffic or parking or things of that sort, those will all be answered at the planning board. Tomorrow, we'll do our best to answer them tonight. But overall, take, looking at this from, from 15,000 feet up, very clearly, we're not causing a substantially detrimental change of use here. Uh, within the building, it's going to make the building click again, and it's a valuable turn of events for that particular parcel on Powder Mill Road. Happy to answer any questions.
Any, uh, board members with questions? Boy, definitely. Uh, the question I have is, I, I've been here long enough to know when the Victory Plaza held a Victory supermarket. And those, your map that you're showing here with all those diagonal parking spots in front. Those were primarily used for the Victory supermarket. And so how is it going to be any different when you have these partial tenants in the building now? And you're gonna take a storage space and make it into a, a supermarket?
Well, the parking analysis that we've done goes into some prior approvals on the property. Uh, I think originally it was designed, and I'm sure one of my team members will jump in to correct me if I'm wrong. It was designed with 108 required spaces. Uh, the count that we have today is 103. And what we're proposing, given the needs to re-stripe and, and, um, reallocate space in the parking area. Is a reduction of one to 102. And we are seeking a special permit from the planning board for that reduction. There's no specific allocation of space for one commercial operator versus another. It's a. Open area parking, any parking space will do for any tenant of the mall.
I'd like to just add a note or, and also invite, um, we have an engineer from BSC Group who did, uh. They did the parking and traffic study for this project, and one of the things that they did was an active parking study, and they did it over a series of days. They did set up cameras and do an active count by use. And so one of the things that was found in that. Is that it is not used in any way to capacity at this point, and that there's more than enough capacity for the parking needs of the Co-op being added into the plaza. Um, but I'm sure one of our engineers can give more detail if needed.
Yeah, I, I'm just still, I, I'm in the helicopter view, looking down on this, going back in memory was. On, on a good day, when they were having a good sale at Victory, the parking lot was reasonably full in front. The stuff way over on the right was just over on the right. It was, you know, if you needed to walk to get some exercise. But you're asking for a change of use from a supermarket to a storage area, and now it's going to be back into a supermarket?
That's correct.
Correct.
And, and so that's. That's all I had. I'm just trying to clarify that. And board members, any questions?
Yeah, I, Paul, I have a question now that you've talked about the parking. Um. There are, right now, there are designated parking spaces that are reserved for the various businesses that are there. Um, I was there earlier today because I needed some. Food for my truck, and so I was at the auto parts store, and it's very crowded in, in the front with the damn time. Uh. You know, clients and, you know, maybe people like me. Um, so it seems to me that there's gonna be. A large use of the overflow or the parking lot, which is, uh, according to your diagram, which is to the right or to the north of the, uh. Uh, of the area. If, it's also a, going to be a supermarket now, you're gonna have, I'm guessing you're gonna have shopping carts? And how, how is that going to be handled as well? Uh, that, that, those generally impact parking spaces quite a bit. Is there, is there a plan for that?
Sam, can you comment on that?
Yes, there, we will have to have a standard staff retrieval plan for bringing carts back to the main shopping area. We do have places designated in our current tentative plans for exterior cart storage and interior cart storage. Um, and per standard grocery store operations, we would have to have staff that would retrieve carts from the main parking area. Cause as you've described, the volume of use with a multi-use plaza would require that people park in the main parking area, so we'll have to accommodate that. And we would coordinate any need for a stand or anything like that with the Kaufmans, and we would discuss that. Um, but most of it is store operations and staffing, yeah.
So are the, are the carts gonna be stored inside the building, or, or are they gonna be accessible outside? For people to.
They would be both, so. Correct, we'd have both, and what we aren't showing here, since our interior store plans. Are still in the architectural development phase. We're not showing the interior, but we do have an exterior spot. Maybe Phil, you could zoom in on that a little bit closer. Um, we do have an exterior spot designated, and we plan to have an overhang over top of that. Um, and then we also have a plan to have space in the interior vestibule. Because we're in a three seasons where it works and one season where it doesn't kind of area, so we will need to have space for carts inside as well.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, is it all right if I ask a, a question?
Who, who is speaking?
Bill.
Oh, yes, Bill, sure.
I just curious about the shopping carts, just got me thinking on it. Um, is there, um. Well, you, you're in the infancy of it, and I would just say, has anybody, uh, or would it be worth looking at something online where you can. Uh, they have the carts where you have a, uh, retrieval deposit? And, and people bring them back, they just clip into each other. And so that it pretty much eliminates carts being left. In the parking lot and eliminates the need for, um. Eliminates the need for somebody to, um. Uh, you know, periodically go out and retrieve. It's more of a comment, I guess, than a question.
Comment received, and we will consider that in our operational plan. Thank you.
As someone who used to work in a grocery store as a, a teenager. And I'm sure I speak for everybody who did this, that's the best job in the grocery store.
Any other questions from the zoning board?
Yeah, yeah, Paul, I've got one, Jerry here. Um, and I, I may have missed it, I think Sam may have commented on it. Is there a cot corral? Uh, gonna be in one of these. Uh, you know, give up a parking space somewhere in the, in the lot that there's gonna be a, a cot corral to put them, if people choose to put them away properly?
We would do that in conversation with the Kaufmans. We didn't place it in this plan currently. Um, we do have to consider. Just impacts on snow plowing especially, so we may. Work it out more with striping for designated areas, but that's something that we would be, we're, we're looking to resolve with the Kaufmans as this moves forward, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? No more questions? Anybody in the audience interested in speaking in favor of this, uh, special permit request? Anybody speaking in opposition to it?
Hey, Paul, Paul, Jerry here, can, can I go back again, as, as that drawing was expanded a moment ago? And this may have been commented on earlier, I noticed one handicap parking space, is that. The calculated number of handicap spaces that would be required for the. Population, uh, projection of that building?
No, uh, there's, there's, yes, there's one proposed close to this, uh, entrance here, but there's actually four. Uh, there's, there's three existing. However, there are, um, five are gonna be required, and in working with the town engineer. We, we're, we're committing to re-striping this area over here to add another ADA space and to improve ADA accessibility.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
So. If there is no more questions, we'll close the public hearing portion of this with the appropriate motion. So we can debate amongst ourselves.
Oh, make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting.
Get a second, Paige, you second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That carries, Bill, you got that, that was unanimous, so you can write down who. And so, question now is, is, I was thinking back in the day when the Victory Market occupied all of that large flat surface, now they're just talking about having it as a portion with the auto parts and whatever else is in there. Is there enough parking and access to this to make it a grocery store? That's, that's where. And I don't, we are the right group to comment on that.
Well, that, that center is on my way to work. So I drive by it pretty frequently, and it just never is even close to filled up at all on that overflow. The most I see there is one or two cars, and they're usually, it looks like they've just been left there for a while.
The thing, the thing, back in the day when it was the supermarket, the prime parking places are the ones at the bottom of the screen as it's showing now. Because you didn't have to drag your wagon across the slush-filled dirt, probably parking lot to get to your car. And if you were, you were one of the unlucky ones that had to park out where that automatic color thing is, that was like in the next county. But, yeah, I don't know if we're the right board to say that they have enough parking and act to where the storefront is.
But they're not the only show in town anymore, and Victory was the only show in town in its day.
Yeah, I know, it's a grocery store, not one of these mega supermarkets.
So.
I think if, Mr. Chair, this is Bill. One thing I'd point out also is, you know, if we were designing this project as a brand new project, um, the, the trend that, that we're trying to promote would be to avoid having a sea of parking in the front, and, and having it, I understand that, that, the proximity, you know, there's, there's a, a good argument for that, however, but of, in the case of our general design standards at this point, I think that having a adjacent, rather than having it in the front facing the road is preferable in general.
Yeah, I, I don't know. You know, that might be what, your, your strategy is, but the way downtown falling short because of available park, it might not be what is useful.
Well, yeah, that's something, the, the parking authority is looking at that downtown, so, but hopefully we'll be okay.
You've had a couple businesses leave now, likely, now of parking. So, this, and, you know, adding a grocery store in what, like maybe half to a third of the original Victory Market footprint, it suggests that it'd be a very big store, so maybe parking's not an issue here. Or if they're very popular, it could be an overload on the parking issues. We've been asked just to convert from storage into a supermarket or a grocery store. And I, I see parking as a challenge. But then again, I don't know if we are the body to comment on the parking.
Well, tomorrow night, Mr. Chair, that's, that's part of the planning board's petition tomorrow night to look at the reconfiguration. The town engineer has been working offline quite a bit with the applicant's engineer, for, really for the last six weeks at least. And I think they've been over through a, a number of potential layouts, and, and in general, I, I think that that will all be dealt with tomorrow night. But as far as I know, based on what I see with the comments coming forward, there hasn't been any concern that I have heard at this point, that's, I would consider significant or anything, but the board will look at that tomorrow night as well, with the, with the town engineer will be there as well.
So what, what I'm leaning towards here is that I don't have a problem with it going back to a supermarket being the other boards, planning board, whoever, dealing with the appropriate parking if it is possible.
And we'd be happy to accept that as a condition, Mr. Chairman. So that the board's approval tonight would be contingent upon the planning board approving the parking. And we, we do have a special permit application pending there, it's not just site plan review, it is a special permit application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your words were very good, maybe we can record those and use those at our permit.
I can repeat them.
So if, if the board members are in agreement with my crazy thought, and, and with what Mr. Bobrowski is saying, then, then can somebody make a motion to that effect?
I can make a motion. Okay. So I make a motion to approve the petition by Blatman, Bobrowski, and Haverity for a special permit for Victory Plaza eighty-six Powder Mill Road, Maynard, requesting a special permit for a change of use from storage to a grocery store. And the, given the finding by the board that such change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, such approval is contingent on approval by the planning board. Is that it?
Contingent on the planning board, I think.
Approval, well.
Parking.
Approval by the planning board?
Yeah, because they're gonna reflect on the parking issues. Did, did I get that right, Mr. Bobrowski?
Yes, it's approval of the parking.
Yeah. Oh, do I get a second?
Second.
Does John? Get anybody voting in favor? Now, Bill, write this down.
All right. Jerry?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paul?
I suppose, yes.
All right, motion carries five zero.
Good. So I think that concludes our public hearing and discussion on the co-op. We have a couple other little things to deal with. So I think.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, can I thank you and your members again for approval of the second special permit? We'll do you proud, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Good luck in your new space.
Thanks. So on our agenda as well, I took it out of order, but it's a couple of minutes. What did we do that we had minutes for?
The December sixth meeting, is that right?
I, December, what, let me open it here. I don't remember.
December sixth.
December sixth, yeah, we did December, that was. Oh, that was the, that was the coffee guy.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
We hadn't approved that yet?
No, we did, but this is the minutes from that meeting. We have to approve the minutes.
All right. Now, I assume everybody has read the minutes?
Yep.
If you can make a motion on them.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals.
We have a second.
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 All right. Bill, figure out who's voting for it.
All right. Jerry?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Well done, okay. Motion carries five zero. Excellent.
All right, what else is on the agenda? I have something called adjourn.
I have one quick announcement though, Paul.
Okay, go for it.
The, on February ninth, you know, Brad and Mr. Cranshaw, who is, I think, on here as well, and myself have been working on our home occupation project, and we have a public meeting, it's gonna be at six P M. on, on the ninth, and so it'll be, of course, on Zoom, so if everybody could come, I think it, it'll be a good conversation. We'll get, we got a lot of good feedback on the survey. We're, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation, and then we're just gonna do a lot of listening and, and, and see what we hear. I'm going to, just so we can, I don't have any problems with either the, the zoning board or planning board, I will post that we're gonna be meeting, so it doesn't, there's no problems if, if anybody wants to come, and that way you can speak to. So that will be, again, that will be on the ninth, and we've been putting, I, I, we put a lot of work into it, particularly, you know, with Brad and Bill Cranshaw, and I think it would be interesting to hear what, what the public thinks.
So when you say you've had a lot of feedback so far?
Yeah.
The clue?
Um, well, we, this is on the, on the survey that we, you know, the online survey. There's, we're not doing, we, we could probably do a better job distilling what the goal is, because, and in this case, if you remember, the goal of this whole thing is to allow uses and, and regulate them by their impact or potential impact to the area, rather than saying the specific use. And some people are a little confused of that, I still get, I, I have, it, it ranges from people saying, well, why are you, why are you, why do you care what I'm doing in my house if I'm, you know, just working on a, a computer? I get that, and then on the other end of it, I get, why do you wanna put a drive-through Taco Bell in the middle of, you know, a residential neighborhood? And, and, and I'm saying, well, we're not trying to do either. So we're gonna, the PowerPoint that we, we created is specifically to try to clarify any misconceptions that we have, we've, we've heard of through the survey. And so, and that way, we hope it'll be more constructive conversation. So we're gonna start off, here's what it's not, here's what it is, try to answer the, the base of concerns. But people, at least, the, the good thing is people are interested, and they're using the, the surveys worked well. And we also made it so, I don't know if it helped, but it sure didn't hurt. We made it where you can register for this meeting on Eventbrite, and it doesn't, of course, doesn't cost money or anything like that, but you can register in advance and make sure that, you know, we send you the reminders and everything like that, and people seem to like that, and it keeps, they get the reminders now, and so they're, they're paying attention, which is all you can ask for when you're looking for public engagement.
So the survey thing that you guys ran?
Yeah.
Was the response, how many folks took it?
I don't know, as of, as of now, we were over, we were about sixty last week or so, Brad, do you know? I haven't, I don't, I can't get into it, Bill.
No, la- last week we were at forty, but Bill was saying that we were getting one or two a day.
Yeah, okay.
After that, initially, we got a, a large barrage of them, and then it's tapered down to a couple a day, but.
So, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna send it a round of advertising out again. We wanted to wait till a week before, so the meeting, and then we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll hit all our, our channels again, and we, as you saw, we did a press release in the newspaper, which should be out. Maybe it already is, but if not, it'll be out Thursday. So it's, it's going pretty well.
Well, good. It might make the job a little easier eventually.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, that's exactly it, it's the right way to do it, I think, you know?
Yeah. Then we just have to deal with the scofflaws.
Yes, yes, I, I have, yes, you're right. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Good. So I think, unless anybody else has any comments to add, I think I'm looking for one more motion.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And second, anybody seconding?
Second.
All right, all in favor? And Bill? Thanks, everybody, it was a good meeting, thank you very much.
Bye, everyone.